Okay, so why don't we get started? First off, I'd like to thank everybody for taking time out of your day to join us. We'll be showing new features in the release coming up in September, version 1.2, specifically around gliders. Before I hand it over to Brian, who can introduce himself from Acxiom, I do want to remind folks that you can contact us through our Discord site or through feedback on the Data Explorer tool. We encourage that you do that. If you have any questions, if you think of after the presentation, feel free to reach out to us. We'll be holding these town hall meetings on a somewhat frequent basis in between our releases and give the user community a chance to give us feedback and ideas on the functionality. With that, it is all yours, Brian.
Thanks, Jeff. My name is Brian Stone. I am a designer here at Acxiom Data Science. I work primarily on the portal. Luke Campbell is also here. He works on most of the backend systems. Let's get started. So the... I'm going to be demoing some new features in the Data Explorer. These aren't accessible yet in the Data Explorer, but they will be at some point in September. And please chime in with any questions, comments, et cetera. Okay, so the first thing I wanted to go over was, I think most people are probably aware of how to get around the Explorer, but there are a few ways you can click on Access Array Data and then you can kind of choose what you want to look at. So if you're interested in, you know, water temperature... Find it here. At Pioneer, go and you get a series of plots. So this addition, you can see that now gliders also have thumbnail images. So you can preview data for each glider alongside sensor data. As you do that, you can hover over the glider plot and get a quick profile of data. You can click on Download and access all the different download methods, or you can click on the glider itself and go into the traditional view. And that's a map with a 3D display and a curtain plot like we're looking at. And we can look at that in a bit. All of the filters work here. If I were to click on something else that has glider data, it will appear alongside sensor data. Okay, clicked on the wrong one. This one doesn't happen to have glider data. You can... Let me go back real quick. Temporal searches also work. If I were to click on the time filter and zoom in on a particular period of time, I'm going to get only those available glider plots for that time period. So, let's see, I didn't choose a great time period. But as I go through, you can see that it's going to update with sensor data that's available and then also glider data that's available. Next to each glider plot, there's this little map that you can click on and get a plot of the... a map plot of where the glider went. And so that can just give you a preview, a quick sense of where it is in space. The next feature is a new selector. This is a new tab within each array. It's this glider and cruise selector here. So what we're looking at now, on the left side, where you get the same previews of plots, again, I can hover and get profile data for... as I hover across the glider. At the top, there's a density chart that's showing where, when the most glider profiles are within the dataset. And then on the map, there's a density plot that's showing when the most profiles are. So if I zoom in on the map, on the time slider, the map's going to update. The plots on the left are going to update with available gliders for that time period, and the density plot on the top is going to update. I can hover to get just a sense of how many profiles with each day are available. If I zoom in further, I'll get hourly. I'm sorry, that stays at days. Zooming back out, I can also do spatial filter. So if I'm interested in a particular area, a particular transect, I can draw a polygon around that area. Again, my available data at the top updates. So I can see when data is available across the time span and then which gliders are available within that area. If I'm only interested in downloading data for the time period and area selected, I can click on this Download Filtered button, and I get a list of the same glider plots. Each of these downloads only will download the filtered data. So if I'm interested in a small, a particular area, a small area, a small period of time, I don't want to download all the data. I can go through and pick out which glider plots I want just, and it will automatically apply those filters. We have a variety of formats available: CSV, Geo JSON, KML, and Shapfile. I can also change which parameter I'm looking at. So if I were to choose oxygen saturation, my map updates, my time filter updates, and then my plots also update. The last piece is a profile comparator. And so we can get to that through... See, I'll choose a different... So now we're looking at coastal endurance. And I can get to this by going through a sensor node or plot. So right now, I've browsed into parameters, and again, I'm going to choose water temperature. I'm going to clear my time filter out so we can see all the time. And I'm going to look for a wire following profiler. So here's one. If I click on this plot, I get the same plot. This hasn't updated. Again, I can get... You know, I can hover to get information, but there's also this new Find Nearby Sample and Glider Profiles tab. If I click on this, I'm going to get a map of nearby profile data. So at the top, we have a small version of the chart. I can use that to filter by time. Beneath that, we have a map that shows where the instrument is located. And then the blue dots show where profiles are located within the time period selected. So the... this new button here, this is a little point selector. I can drag this across and select a profile from a particular time period. On the left side, let me zoom in so it's easier to see what's going on here. Okay, so now we're looking at fairly granular time information about the profiles available. So these bars indicate density of profiles for that particular time period, and these are hour windows. So if I drag this slider over one of these time periods, it's going to select all profiles that happened within that hour. That's the blue line. And then it's going to also, if available, select sensor data from within that time period. And that's the red line. So this is a way to compare sensor data to profile information. I'm going to zoom back out and show a couple other filters. So if I'm interested in comparing the sensor to a different parameter, I can choose that. So I could choose salinity, and now we're seeing a salinity plot from the glider. That's the blue compared with water temperature from the sensor. That's the red. And I can, you know, I can tick through these and see, find something that I'm interested in. If I want to download the profile information, I can hit Download Filtered. If I'm interested in looking at... I'm going to go back to water temperature. If I'm interested in only looking at cruise data, so discrete samples, I can choose that under Type. For some reason, these guys aren't loading. Try a different one. And so the blue line again is the discrete sample cruise data. The red line is the sensor data. I'm just going to back out to the main search interface and show a different way into the cruise data because that was also a recent information or a recent addition that'll be part of this release. There's now a Cruise Data tab in the tabular search interface. If I click on that, I get all cruise data for a particular whatever array I'm looking at. I can hover to see the profiles. I can select the cruises, and then I can enter into each of these by clicking, and I get a 3D view. Over here, these white dots are where the samples were taken. And then at the top, we get the curtain plot. Cruise data is also available through all other searches. So if I were to go to Search, it now appears under Platform Types. So I can select Cruise Data. Or if I were to be looking at, say, conductivity, it will appear with all other search results. So that's my run through. I'm hoping that there are some questions. So Stuart?
And so why is... You can talk as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi. I just noticed that in your Download Filtered there, it didn't offer NetCDF. And I was wondering if that was a choice or just settings? Or if that's coming up?
So that's the system that we're using GeoServer to serve that data. I don't believe offers NetCDF, but I'm going to look into it. I can show you a different way to get to NetCDF data, but you wouldn't be able to get to the filtered version. So if I'm looking at a glider, and this would go for, you know, anywhere within the views that I demonstrated. If you click on the title, you're going to get this full glider view. This one takes a bit longer to load up.
Brian, while you're waiting for that to load, John Fram and Hillary Polaski have questions in the chat.
Okay. Let's see. I don't see them. I only see Stuart's questions.
In the chat, not the Q and A.
Okay. I see. Okay. To help folks download along paths with glider data, it would be helpful if one could select by glider line or at least see the intended glider lines for each array on the map. For the new part. Okay, yeah, so I'll go back to the map and show that quick. Okay, as far as downloads go, you get more downloads on this page. They're not filtered by time or space, but you can click on Downloads and you get a lot more options up here. So you can see Process.NC, the arrow format, which is similar to RAW.NC. And then you can also get into PerDapp. And from here, you can filter on Time and bounding box and create Downloads. If there is a need for a NetCDF, we can look into... Well, I'll definitely look into GeoServer to see if I can just add that for free. But I'm not sure about polygon filters on that CDF data. Okay, so going back to the spatial view, I'll go to Coastal Endurance. So currently, what we're showing, we are showing the cable lines and we're showing the instrument locations. If we had shape files for those glider lines, we could add them to the map. And then I guess I would either want to make this heat map semi-transparent so you could see them. But I've noticed they kind of pop out because they have the most profiles in general. But yeah, if we have shape files for those, we can definitely add those to the map.
John, does that answer your question? I did unmute you.
He typed in, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll get the shape files to Brian. Thank you. This is super cool. Thank you.
Okay, Hillary asks, "How are you handling or planning to handle telemetry versus recovered data from the gliders?" Okay, so basically, we get the glider data from the glider DAX. I use glider DAX. So we just pull in whatever's available. We do record what... I'm going to go into Search. We do record what the collection method is. So this Search tab is pretty handy if you're a more advanced user. So I can subset down to all gliders within Coastal Endurance, and then I can just do a text search. So you can see that each of these gliders has a, in parentheses, recovered or telemetered. And so you can, you know, you can search unrecovered. I think you were asking if you could merge the data, and we don't offer that right now. That would need to be provided to the glider deck as a dataset, and then we could ingest that. Let's see, hopefully this one doesn't take as long. Maybe I'll pull up a telemetry because those are smaller. When you're at a... one of these glider detail pages, you get... Well, this one only has the one, but all other deployments for a glider come up in the dropdown. This one says deployment 11, so I would expect 10 others. All other deployments should show up in a list there so that you can quickly toggle back and forth. Is there a glossary of different download options? I also want NetCDF and want to know what the difference is between Process.NC and RAW.NC. We don't currently have a glossary of download options. And I don't know off the top of my head. Maybe Luke knows what the difference between Process.NC and RAW.NC is. They're the same size. Those may be... Say that again?
It's metadata, I believe.
Okay.
The RAW.NC is as... The Process.NC, the standard name mapping is applied, long name, any of the unit conversions that we do internally. So if the temperature is in Kelvin, we'll convert it to Celsius.
Hillary, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I'm still trying to figure out how I would use the interface if I just found the telemetry data to make sure I knew that the recovered data was there as well so that I knew to download both and merge them myself. But maybe I can play around a little bit more with this once it's live.
One thing, and this is actually available now, one thing you can do is, let's see, go to Platform Types, Gliders, and you can do this across the whole system or add a particular array. So I'll choose Pioneer. We've basically sort of sliced and diced the gliders in different ways. And if I choose gliders here, here, they're broken down by... Yeah, this wouldn't solve the problem that you're having. Yeah, I don't think this would solve it. It sounds like you want to group based on a particular glider and get all methods.
Yes, because I'm thinking for any given glider deployment, sometimes there's just telemetered, and sometimes there's just recovered, and sometimes there's both. And I... most users, if both exist, will want to look at both to make sure that they're not missing Apache part that exists in one but isn't in the other.
Yeah, I guess I think I would go to one of these, the Search tab, and search for the glider that you're looking for. So say, glider 340. And then just go from there and start to pick and choose which download you want to take. Would a deployment method filter help if you could filter on recovered versus telemetry?
Some users might only be able to use recovered data because the telemetered might not be high enough resolution. But I'm thinking about users who might need like an intro to how to use these data to know that both exist, that I think users might do a whole research project not knowing that recovered data exists.
Right.
And then be really disappointed that they thought data didn't exist. They did, or, you know, vice versa with one or the other. So some sort of... this is more like instruction to user kind of thing, to make sure that people know to look for both and don't accidentally miss one.
Yeah, okay. I'll make a note about that. That might be something we could add to the documentation.
And also, this is just really cool. Thank you so much for adding this functionality.
Oh, good. Once it is live, please remember to use the Feedback tab up here. You can give us feedback on, you know, what you're seeing. If you're having a problem, if there's something you want added. Okay, I see. It looks like somebody already answered the question about what type of gliders. Within the system, we offer whatever information we have available in this little metadata section down here. And in this case, it's not giving what type of glider. If you click on the metadata link, this gives more metadata available from the I use glider deck. And this may have information about... yeah, so this says Platform Types, local glider. Can one use this tool to get data access endpoints to programmatically access the data from a Jupiter hub? Yeah, so that's what... That's how I envision people primarily using this, like, spatial search interface. So if you were to subset your data, you know, and you're interested in maybe the area around these two instrument, and then you click on Download Filtered, you can then copy out these endpoints in whatever format you want to use, and you can paste them into a notebook. And that's a process that we've talked about, you know, offering snippets of code and stuff like that. But in general, this, if you were to copy this out, you could, you could just use it in a notebook or a script.
Does that actually copy the data to my computer? Or does it say, "Data stay in the server," and I access it over the network?
It depends on where your notebook is. If it's on your computer, it's going to download it to your computer. But if you're using like a Jupiter Hub notebook, it...
I think, Mike, you were thinking, "Can you connect to the data and process in place?" Was that the question?
Yes, yes. Or leave the data in place and just extract directly into the notebook without having to make a local copy of the file.
Right, I believe you can, you can connect into PerDapp 100%. I know, I know someone's playing that, but we also have, in the near future, will be doing a proof of concept with Jupiter Hub to be able to do it.
Okay.
I know, I saw, I shouldn't call out Rich by name, but I know one of our users, Rich, has connected into PerDapp to do that.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any other questions or anything they'd like to see demonstrated?
Brian, it might be helpful if you talked about when this will go live.
Yeah, I think we're slated to go live in the first or second week of September. And we hope to have a preview site out for some users in the next week or two.
First full week of September.
The questions I had for people were, "What can we do to make Downloads more usable?" And I think we got some good feedback on that CDF. I am curious, once people start using the profile comparator, if that's usable and intuitive, how it works, and what other features you'd like to see. Okay, Stuart says, "Hi, I'm curious, when you pull data from the I use DAX, is it a one-time pull or does it regularly pull in case these are updated?" I think that's a question.
That is definitely a big question. We pull daily from the glider DAX. So if anything gets updated, properties for the system as soon as the caches are invalid. So if anything's re-uploaded, it should just work. We've seen some issues where if the deployment name... If the glider disappears from the DAX and then it's like, re-uploaded with a different file with the same deployment name, we've noticed issues in that case, and we have to go and manually clear it out sometimes. But as long as it doesn't like get fully deleted and then re-uploaded, so if the individual files work for... I guess as long as the ErDAP URL is still linked to the data that is desirable to be ingested and function correct as desired and sort of in the intuitive way, it's only when the ErDAP link suddenly stops working or return errors that things go awry.
Okay, so when you said it, if a deployment is deleted, it's messed it up before. Is that if the deployment, the entire deployment structure is removed from the DAX? Or could it be the same case where all files underneath a deployment structure are removed? Or maybe you don't even know the difference?
I think it's mostly if our interface to the glider DAX is through PerDapp. And if we query PerDapp and see that a deployment that we had previously downloaded no longer exists, the system is unable to deal with that case because it's like, we've already downloaded some data. It doesn't exist anymore. And it... there's really... we haven't identified the path we should take. Should we delete all the data locally? And hope that late... or should we wait and see if the URL comes back later on and then fill in the rest of the missing data? So far, it's only happened, I think, in two cases. And in those cases, we simply just, we keep the data on our system when it was on our system, and we just basically removed it, links to those deployments from the portal. But I think in those cases, they were re-uploaded with like a different deployment name, slightly different on like the timestamps, like they're only off for like a minute or two. And so it looked like the intent was, these are the more correct ones. And these, because they had more metadata and they were uploaded more recently. So it was intended that those deployments were the true versions of those glider deployments. And those were ingested with that issue that presents that.
Okay, thanks.
Brian, did you have any other questions?
All right now. Okay, thanks everyone for logging in.
One last call for questions from the audience. Okay, I want to thank everybody for dialing in and watching the demo. watching the demo. Please, if you come up with any questions or thoughts, please do use the feedback or discourse and contact us. Thank you much.